New Development and Project Technologist.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I trust this is how this all works. Oh, thank you. So after I arrived, I was given the, delegated the task of taking on as project manager for the Westridge Road Rehabilitation Project. So a little bit of history is that the road and the and the utility structure within it has pretty much reached the end of its lifespan. We, it parallels the Trans-Canada Highway, which, as we all know, serves as a visual gateway into the town from the west. And the timing of the project directly ties to council's objective of the beautification of the highway corridor, which is found in the Towns Council Strategic Plan. Last year, videos were taken of the sewer line and showed that there had been extensive degradation in the way of sagging and some blockage of the sewer lines. As well, that water main that is located in there is actually iron ductile and is part of the replacement program, as well as it is slowly degrading. It is also slated for a upgrade and an upsize to a 300 mil to allow for expansion of the downtown and the highway corridor. Excuse me. So it makes sense that while doing the road project to replace the sanitary as well as the water line and upsize it at the present time, it's also coinciding with ATCO's intention to upsize their line. We have asked them to hold off for a year and go in with ours at the same time so that we keep construction and inconvenience to everyone along that road to a minimum. They have agreed. To give you an idea of the project boundaries for this project, it is going from Westmont Road to Westchester and hopefully incorporating the final service road that has been decommissioned at the moment in front of Best Western. We are hoping to put in a pathway that ties directly to the intersection at 817. Project was broken into three phases. First one was, like I said last year, we did the cameraing of the sanitary line and as well, we also did a survey of, a topo survey of the area to determine if there were any infrastructures in place that would impact. We, Phase Two is now, which we have hired All North to be our engineering consultant, and they are working on the deliverables of a submission of issued for construction drawings with a Class One cost estimate. We are looking at including the sewer system, the upgrading of the sanitary, or the water line, as well as in doing landscaping and looking at a multimodal pathway, which of course would then upgrade the carriageway. And after that is complete, we will move on to the construction, which we are hoping will be 2020. So recently, the landscape architect came out with some street profiles, and the one that was chosen is the one that you see on the screen. I'm going to ask you to do a little bit of picturing it a little differently. From the highway side, we will have two lanes, three and a half meters each, and the parking lane that is shown will actually not be there. We are looking at putting in a bioswale to deal with stormwater on the road. Looking at a three and a half meter to four meter sidewalk, which will be multimodal, so that will include pedestrian walking, biking, skateboarding, whatever. And then again, to the north will be another strip of landscaping. In the future, as the businesses on the north side change and upgrade themselves, they will be required to put in another additional strip of landscaping as part of their frontage, which means we'll have a very nice buffer down the road. It was also interesting to note that what, at the workshop that we attended, that Planning and Economic Development put on with Michael Von Haussen, that similar to you, council, they are looking at the fact that the road itself is, or is not conducive to knowing that Strathmore is in behind it. They feel that the lighting could use an upgrade, the signage is, needs to be reduced, and they would like to encourage the motors to stop, stay, take advantage of our amenities and our parks. And our landscape architect, as well as our communication group, attended the meeting and took notes and are looking at incorporating what was heard into the final design. Currently, we have, a letter of introduction to the project has been hand-delivered to all the businesses on Lake, on Westridge. We are looking at hosting one-on-one coffee chats on the 15th and 16th of this month. That will be followed by additional feedback and communication with the businesses. We're looking at hosting a possibility of two open houses. And we have also met with Alberta Transportation, and they are very receptive to the project and the ideas that we have put forth. They are specifically replacement of the lighting if we chose to. We have the option to decommission the right-in, right-out intersection that's found in the middle. We are looking at the feasibility of this. We've sent it to our transportation consultant, I know, to have them look at the thought process behind that. And it will also be raised during the coffee chats with the businesses to alert them to the idea and get feedback on them, from them. Alberta Transportation is also happy to look at the options for bioswales, planters, shrubs on the south side of the highway, or the south side of Westridge. They do not want any trees planted along there because as they mature, they become a hazard to the road should they fall over into the highway. We also heard from the workshop that the lighting and ways of advertising ourselves on the highway was of interest to the group there. And so while I was talking to them, I raised the idea of installing banners or receptacles to the existing post. They're in favor of the banner but not the receptacle. They are also in favor of replacing the Cobra head if we so desire, but we have to find a head that is approved by AT Product Line. Let's see. As we go forward, we will be reviewing, the team will be reviewing submissions from preliminary to final and finally to issued for construction drawings for both the civil and the landscaping. And the timing that we have on this is for January the 31st in and around 2020, which gives us the opportunity that should we be allowed to move forward, we will be able to post an RFP early in the year, which should give us the best list of contractors coming in to bid with better pricing. The advantage, advantage to constructing in one season because it has been brought forward that we may look at phasing. Biggest one is money. If we do it in stages and in years, it increases the mobilization and demobilization costs of the contractor. It increases the staff time to coordinate it, and there could be change order costs associated with the contract due to drastic changes in pricing, say asphalt because of oil pricing or something, that could cause us to have a higher cost that we would have to negotiate with them. This gives us an approximate savings of 150 to 200,000. Non-tangible business, benefits to this is that by phasing, you inconvenience the businesses due to road closures and access closures as you have to wait so long for concrete to cure, et cetera. It also will, by doing it in one season, you'll start to decrease the maintenance on the road. Last year, roads had to put their entire, almost entire crack seal budget into bringing the road up to some serviceable standard. As well, because of the agreement we have currently with AT, that has the option of possibly changing. Disadvantages to deferring the project or components of the project. Again, the maintenance costs will increase as the surface deteriorate. We know that there is degradation of the sanitary and water main lines. At some point, there will be a failure or a breakage in the lines, which would require emergency repair and costs, of course, increase with that. There are some areas of ponding currently on that road during rain events that will increase as the road continues to fail. And the other little piece in there is ATCO. They are currently, as I said, wishing to upsize their line in 2020. They, at that point, would abandon the old line. We would like to have that abandoned line removed, which we would ensure by constructing at the same time as they were. And that's it, and any questions?
Counselor Sobel.
Thank you, and thank you very much for that, Kathy. This is, this is a road that's on my bucket list, so I'm so glad to see us moving, moving forward with some planning. A few questions for you. You mentioned the water pipe, and I'm just curious, is there any evidence of leakage at this point?
Not as far as I know, but because it is iron ductile and it's been in there for so long, it would more or less be starting.
Do you anticipate maintaining some access to the businesses, businesses during the construction period?
We would be doing our best to limit it, whether it's a few short days. When we do install the concrete, there would have to be a closure at that point to their access because it has to cure over a number of days to ensure that it's...
No, that's understandable, but you know, I certainly hope that we maintain a priority on that. That's, I think, going to be one of the important
Yes.
things for them. And my last question for you is in regards to Westmont Road, that intersection and West, Westridge Road, of course, especially if you decommission the right-in, right-out portion in the center of the, of West, Westridge Road. And increasing the traffic at Westmont, at Westridge is, I mean, I think it's already a bit of an issue. It's a kind of a weird configuration there. Is there any plans for fixing that up?
That is not within the scope of my project. I do realize it's an issue, and I do realize that it does have some interesting traffic patterns to it. I do know that the right-in, 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 right-out intersection is a safety hazard currently. People have to stop. They go forward, but they don't always manage to see the person whipping in and turning right and never stops, just goes straight and just about T-boned you.
It's a lot better than what it was. Which was wide open.
So it, hence the reason it's being sent to the transportation engineer to get a feel for what could be done.
At where, at Westmont?
Right at the, right-in, right-out.
Okay, so I really think we, if we're going to be doing this at this point, we have to consider Westmont as part of this project. And I don't know how to, how to tack that on or anything, but it's just, it's, it's, it's intrinsic to, to, to safety of that intersection, which is part of where we're going.
Ryan, did you want to weigh in?
Absolutely. Thank your worship. Part of the reason that I want to be bringing discussions on these big capital projects to council earlier than our departments have in the past is, is actually to get these insights before we start making plans. So if, if it's sort of the feel of councillor, councillors, that this is worth including or at least making sure that we review as part of it, we're early enough stages in the project that we can just do that as a little scope.
Scope change.
Little scope change on the project. That's part of our objective of bringing this to council is to pick up some of these, these items attached to it that we might not think of. So thank you for the comment, and yeah, we'll make sure that our review of that intersection is part of this.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. I have two questions, one for Kathy and one for administration, actually. The first question, Kathy, when you're talking about the scope of work along the Trans-Canada, is there, at the same, if this was approved at the same time that it's being done, would we also look at that problematic stormwater pipe that goes under the Trans-Canada and has been such a flooding problem at the east end of that road area, right near the Husky Gas Station? Yeah, we've had a lot of problem with, when heavy rainfalls come, there's flooding. Would that be done at that same time? Where's that ATCO? Ryan?
Your worship, that's when we're working with Epcor on it this time. Yeah, that's been identified as a, a big issue, the boulder under there. And so David's been working with Epcor on that.
Thank you very much. And question for administration. James, would we, would we get a fairly accurate cost by the time we go to budget meetings to, when we're voting on this as a project? Ryan?
Your worship, right now, we do have a budget request prepared for a budget meeting, so council will be able to make an informed decision whether they proceed for 2020, 2021 or beyond. We'll bring options for both a one-year phase and a two-year phase. So yeah, I'm comfortable, we'll have an estimate that we can build to.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Peterson?
I was just going, thinking that the bioswales might have some mitigation in terms of the, the, the boulder issue under the highway. It could.
But that area is actually west.
Alberta Transportation, too.
Yeah, it is. You're right.
The area that you're talking about is west, yes. Yeah, but it's also downhill, right? Like there's a downhill, there's a downhill grade, I think. I don't know.
Your worship.
It's not a conversation for today. I was just thinking. I like the idea of putting bioswale in.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you very much, Counselor Peterson. I think that's it from council. Thank you for your presentation, Kathy. And that brings us to item 6.2, Proposed Amendments to Bylaw Number 18-06, Water Utility Bylaw, and Michael, welcome back.
Thank you, your worship and council. Ah, there it is. Ah, yes, worship, council, I've thrown a whole lot of literature at you, and I'll briefly speak to it and hopefully entertain questions thereafter. The report has been somewhat innocuously named Bylaw 1806 Amendments, but we're really talking about amending the bylaw to get into a extensive cross-connection control program. So a cross-connection control program will entail new construction requirements for service connections. It would mean we go into existing properties to inspect them to see if they need refits. It would mean enforcing an amended bylaw, perhaps with some incentives, using perhaps a carrot and stick approach. And then the first step to that would be to change our bylaw so that it actually works and enables staff to get in and set this up and actually do the enforcement if we are going to embark on this. So why, why should we be doing this? And this is largely my view, but I think it's shared by a number of others. Strathmore has a land use profile that puts it at significant risk to cross-control contamination. We have an awful lot of industrial, commercial, and institutional properties, and those are the ones that we would be targeting for putting in proper cross-control prevention devices or backflow prevention devices. I would suggest that, given our, our land use, our level of risk is probably in order of magnitude greater than Chestermeers, for example. And I believe that we should be doing our due diligence and ensuring that we have a good program in place. So... Where are we? The targeted properties that we want to look at are industrial properties, our commercial properties, and our institutional properties, and I believe we have several hundred of those that we will have to deal with. So these are industrial properties, our commercial properties, and our institutional properties. Most municipalities do not target residential properties other than larger multifamily buildings. So at this point, we're not suggesting that we expand the program to residential properties at all. So what, what really is cross, a cross-contamination? It's essentially where the municipal water system carries a contaminant that comes from a customer. So it is in effect a backfeed of water from the private system into the municipal system. And this can happen in a number of ways. One way would be is, is from a property that might have multiple service connections. And so if those are joined or intertwined, now what happens is that property is actually a conduit for municipal water, same way that a detour in a road would be a conduit for alternate traffic. So if there was a contamination on that site, that would immediately transfer into the municipal water system. Another source is what's called back pressure, where there may be a well or an alternate source on the property, or there may even be some pressure vessels. Industrial users use a lot of pressure vessels, or tanks, and that if there was a drop in pressure in the municipal water system at all, or even, it might happen on a continuous basis because that pressure vessel is at a higher pressure than the municipal system. So now that water is feeding back into the municipal system. Yeah. Okay. Yes. If they have irrigation from another source?
Right.
Absolutely, yes. Yes.
Private wells.
A private well that also has our service. And we put in the report that a property that would have a private well in addition to a municipal service would be a, a, a high priority candidate for backflow prevention. Yes, and that's the other, the third typical example of, of backflow, where we have a sudden break or a sudden opening of a hydrant, suddenly we create a vacuum in the line and we're pulling water back from a private property. The backflow contamination, as often as not, it can be chemical as well as biological. It can be noxious, or it can be undetectable. And sometimes it's better if it's noxious, simply because people will stop drinking it, stop using it right away. It's more often if it's undetectable, that's where you often will get the long-term effects or the illnesses. So right now, we know we have several hundred properties. Our bylaw speaks to not permitting cross-contamination, but it's not enforced at all. By rights, every backflow prevention device should be tested once a year, and those reports should be submitted to the municipality. We have several hundred properties. In the past year, we've received test reports from seven of them. So probably in the range of 1% are actually in full compliance, and even those, we're not sure whether they have the appropriate device. So we suspect that we have a number of properties with backflow prevention devices, but they may not be the appropriate devices. We, we probably have devices that are installed, that are appropriate, they get tested regularly, but we don't see the records. Those would be fairly simple to bring into compliance. We have devices that are installed but not tested. Our hospital, which is a high-risk property, would be one of those. And then we have a, a lot of properties, we expect, that simply don't have a device. So what we've done is we've proposed amendments to the bylaw that will consider the levels of risk. There are two different types of devices that we should be using. This is changing on here, I don't know whether it's changing on there. Let me see if I can get this to move. Pardon me? I need to change that screen. Oh, it's on here, all right. Okay. So right now, we have two different devices that are typically used for backflow prevention. The best device is typically called a reduced pressure backflow device, which is called an RP backflow preventer. We recommend that the bylaw be written in such a way that we require those for moderate to severe risk property uses. The, where there is a minor or moderate risk, we believe that it will be acceptable to use what are called double-check valve assemblies. That's what the DCVA stands for. And so the proposed amendments to the bylaw are written up that way. And so, all right, you ask, well, how do we identify what's a moderate risk to what's a severe risk? The American Water Works Association has a whole manual, this thick on backflow prevention, and they have a four-page list of land uses. and they have a four-page list of land uses, and they've identified them as either moderate, minor, or severe. And they have some that are actually moderate to severe, and some that are minor to moderate. So, they have five different levels of risk based on the land use. So, what we're suggesting is the two highest levels, that the bylaw require that they have reduced pressure backflow preventers. There will be a number of land uses in Strathmore that would require those. To set this up, what we're suggesting is that we send out notifications after we do inspections. And to install a backflow prevention device is going to cost some money to our customers. The suggestion is that we propose a timeline for them to do it, and if they comply with the timeline, that they'd be eligible for perhaps a rebate. Staff have suggested that perhaps that be in the range of 20% of that cost. I mean, but that's an arbitrary number, we could set it at zero, we could set it at 50% if we want. And then, that would be followed up with further notifications if there's not compliance. And then, the ultimate hammer that the bylaw always has is we can shut the water off. We wouldn't do that without, you know, on about the fourth or fifth notice. And this is a pretty standard procedure that other municipalities use. We also would require, we'll do the inspections and we'll require testing. There are a lot of devices, we expect, that are out there that just aren't tested, and so, we would be sending out notifications to get those test records. And we would be able to do that by doing those property inspections and then looking at when they were last tested, because every device has to have a tag on it identifying when it's been tested. So, the first real step is to get buy-in from council, and part of that is adopting an amended bylaw. So, in the report, we've given you as appendix one, the original wording, and then appendix two is our recommended wording for the changes. We intend to approach this in a bit of a stepped fashion, where we identify our top 20 hazardous properties and deal with enforcement from there. After that, my suggestion is we then look at the next 100, and then the next 100 after that, and proceed through it. We need to develop proper letters, we need to develop our testing template, the test forms that we've gotten in use the City of Calgary's template, because we don't have our own. And then, we would defer the multifamily residential till a future date when this program is fully up and running. So, with that, I'm happy to try and answer any questions you might have. The idea is to, assuming if these bylaw amendments are acceptable, they would then come to a council meeting for formal adoption.
Thank you, Mike, Michael. Counselor Sobel.
Thank you. Thanks for your report and your recommendations, Michael. Is backflow prevention, is that covered at all under provincial code, building codes?
It's covered under the plumbing code. The plumbing code speaks to it, but the way our bylaw, we refer to the plumbing code as we say, you must install a backflow prevention device as required in the plumbing code. Well, the plumbing code doesn't directly say, if you have this kind of land use, you shall have this kind of backflow prevention device. It speaks to the devices and what standard they should be, but it doesn't directly apply to a bylaw that would enforce it. So, we have, that's why we're proposing the amendments to the bylaw, because our existing bylaw really isn't written properly to enforce the program.
So, to follow up on that... I'm just, so, if it's not in code, at what, at what point do we get involved? So, we get, we have to get involved in this post-build?
No, we don't. It's not something that is absolutely required on the part of municipalities. But what it is, it's strongly recommended that this be part of every municipality's and every water system's due diligence in running their water system. In the same way that it won't necessarily say in the plumbing code or in any kind of code, how we treat our water, or what level of treatment we give our water. But at the same time, we need to do our due diligence in treating it, depending on what the water source is.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is, a business comes in and builds a commercial or industrial building and is under no requirement to put in backflow prevention with our, as far as licensing and inspections go. So, we have to wait until they're finished to go and approach them and say, by the way, we have a bylaw and...
No, no, what we would be doing...
How is this going to work?
Yeah, the way it would work with the new construction is, that would be part of the initial requirements as they submit for a building permit. So, we set out, oh, you have this use, our bylaw says with this use, you must use, put in this type of backflow preventer. So, that's how the, is intended that the bylaw be amended, so it's very clear.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. Counselor Cox.
Thank you, worship. I have a few questions, just a couple. Can you, can you give us, I know it's difficult because it depends on which system they're using, but let's go with the not highest cost-based fund, but how much money are we looking at that is going to be, it's going to cost these businesses to do what we are asking them to do?
Okay. In my initial report, I did look at the costs. If we're looking at a smaller device, a backflow preventer for a small service, for a commercial, you might be looking in the range of anywhere from $600 to $1,000 to have it purchased and installed. And a larger industrial user that's putting in, say, a two- or three-inch diameter device, you might be looking at two to three, maybe $4,000. Reduced pressure backflow preventer is typically a little more expensive than a double-check valve assembly, and it has a little more stringent requirements in terms of how it's installed.
And that's the higher-priced one that you said?
That's, the higher price typically is the backflow, the RP device, and it is what we're recommending for moderate to severe risk and severe risk.
So, then, my next question is, we're still, I'm talking money on all of these questions. The next one is, you're suggesting an incentive if they get it done, I like that. But what about if they don't get it done? Are we suggesting a fine?
We're not suggesting a fine at this point. However, the bylaw could contemplate that. The suggestion is that we give them a series of notifications, and at some point, if they absolutely refuse to comply, we're in a position to shut their water off.
Right, so, of course, we don't want to do that because we don't want to hurt our businesses, but we don't want to affect our water. So, then, my next question is, what if the business comes and they say, we can't afford it? Are we in a position where we could possibly loan them the money, charge them interest, so on and so forth, so that we can ensure that it gets done?
I think that would be up to the town if it wishes to have a program that way. So, if we could loan them the money and they pay it back on their water bills over a one- to-two-year period, that might be another approach we could take, but that, staff would have to look at that, I guess, as an approach, but that may be a reasonable approach if it's that difficult an undertaking for them. The other approach would be, we look at perhaps increasing the amount of rebate that we would provide.
Right, okay, thank you.
The cost to a business could also be done over time? Like, you could set it out over a six-month period?
Well, I think that would have, we'd have to look at that through the utility or finance department if they wish to do that, so... But one way is to do that would be just to add it to their quarterly water bills.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Peterson.
Thank you, worship. So, we know this community has lots of work to do around stormwater, and then certainly relates to backflow and plumbing and all the rest of it. One of the things, and it just may not have anything relevant to this, but one of the things that's always concerned me, and it isn't as critical as it's been in past years because the density of feedlot production around us has gone down significantly. But Alberta's controls on their non-point source water pollution controls is kind of abysmal in terms of the rest of the world. And so, would stormwater catastrophe have a potential to impact this in terms of backflow and in terms of backflow from private plumbing systems in the community? And I just think, I always remember, we did a flyover in a helicopter, and we had topographical maps, and we were looking at water flows and stormwater process and potential in the community in the future. And so, when I think about our large industrials on the edge of our communities particularly...
Well, perhaps...
I don't know.
Perhaps the best way to answer that is, I could talk about my own experience with a contamination event that happened to me nine years ago when I was the administrator in Coalstream, British Columbia. We had a farmer who was, well, he wasn't out of the regulations, but he was not in compliance with the guidelines for spreading manure...
Right.
Just up the hill from where we had a well. And it was in January, and we had a very heavy rainstorm, and we had snow melt, and there was an old pipe that led into that well, and that manure fed directly into that pipe, and we were pumping... Advised 1,200 homes that they could not use their water. Fortunately, it was one of those instances where what was coming out of their taps was black, so we had only one case of illness derived from that, but it was a stage-two emergency. It was also a case where the province went to the regional district, which owned the water system, and to Coalstream, and we were charged criminally for that. The defense that we had was the same as what's written in the Alberta Water Act, it's called a due diligence defense that is in there. Coalstream decided that to fight the fine that we were levied, which was $25,000, really wasn't, we might as well pay it, because for us to defend it would have cost us two or three times that as a minimum. The regional district did decide, because they were given a higher fine, but they lost in court, because due diligence, when you're starting to talk about technical issues, is difficult to explain to judges who are ex-lawyers and are not trained technically, and so it becomes more difficult. So, the process, if there is a contamination, the water purveyor is guilty until they can prove themselves innocent. It's the inverse of the normal legal process.
Because it's water, because it's water.
Yeah.
And Michael, the reason, I really appreciate the report, it kept me busy all week, reading up and learning, and it was a fascinating learning journey, but the reason that this really resonates at this particular time for me, and I fully agree with everything that's proposed in the bylaw and the process you've undertaken, I think is really diligent. But for our community and the perspective, thinking about what Counselor Sobel brought forward in our last week's meeting with regards to potential damages on the outset of our community, we've had, when GFL was in this council chamber two years ago, or nearly two years ago, one of the questions that I asked in that time was, if we understood the impact of water quality relevant to what was happening on the periphery of our community, we tested the air, but we didn't have any capacity to test the water, the underground aquifer systems. And the answer that we got in this council chamber was, we really don't know, we don't know what's happening with regards to that. And the other thing that really, really concerns me about peripheral concerns for this community is that my understanding is that feedlots in Alberta are not required to have three settling ponds like there is in many, and so, they can, they have the capacity to spray raw manure onto farmland, and we know that we do have people in this community that have private systems tapped into our own system and all kinds of other varieties of... And I really, I really am concerned that a stormwater event, which is inevitable at some point, will, could really impact us, especially with the plumbing backflow. And so, I just, one of the things that I really think that, in light of what we've been facing, I would really like to think about this some more in terms of bringing resolution for a day you may in a future, just in a future discussion, but in the meantime, I really appreciate what you've brought, lots of, lots of work and thinking for consideration.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Michael, my only question is, when do you see this coming to us with proposed amendments for us to decide on?
Well, I would say as soon as staff can get the bylaw on the table for amendment.
Okay.
Because to me, that's the key initial step for staff to actually start dealing with this properly.
Thank you. Ryan?
Your worship, if I may build on what Michael said, there'd sort of be two prongs to this approach initially from council approval. One would be the amendments to the bylaw, and then the other would be a discussion in terms of what sort of either subsidies the town would offer, what sort of staging, whether as suggested it be, you pay one-eighth of the cost over eight, you know, eight water bills, or sort of how the town ends up subsidizing it. So, that would be separate from the bylaw, that would be a policy of some sort. So, those would be two separate decision items. One would be the amendments to the bylaw that Mike has attached, and then a separate discussion would be how, to what degree the town would subsidize or support these, or allow installments, or what that would look like.
Okay, thank you very much, Ryan, and Michael, thank you for your presentation. Oh, sure, Deputy Mayor Montgomery.
Do you think that maybe there's, just for like a limited time, in order to kind of implement this effectively and quickly and at a fairly low cost, would it be worth bringing like somebody in-house that could provide this service so that we can control the cost a bit better for people?
Perhaps I could speak to that. In order to install backflow devices, you must be certified. In order to test them, you must be certified.
Right.
There is a local company that are doing that. They would be very, very excited to see this happen in Strathmore. They do a lot of this work in Calgary and Airdrie and other communities where they have the program. They do very little of it here, yet they live right here, they live right here in Strathmore. That's the irony of it. They would be prepared to contract to the town to provide testing services, or we could, or we set up a referral-based system to them to do the work for us. But we can't do that in-house, but even setting the program up and doing the inspections to see what's needed and what level of compliance is needed is already a pretty significant undertaking for our staff. So, hopefully, that answers your question?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I understand there's certifications and whatnot involved. I'm just, I guess, cautious about when, you know, we mandate, you know, that people have to go and, you know, basically buy a service from a private company and then, you know, basically kind of handing a monopoly, some big chunk of business. It's, it's something that we should be trying to, I guess, control the cost as much as possible without, and, you know, like, I mean, if, you know, if there's 700 businesses out there that, you know, are looking at a $500 rebate, I think that's, you know, it's a fairly substantial amount of money that we'll have to cough up, so...
Well, yeah, that's why I believe that we're not going to be able to accomplish this in one year. This is probably a two-to-three-year program, where we start from the high-risk businesses and work our way down to the lower risk, because not every commercial land use is the same as every other commercial land use. A medical laboratory would be classified as severe risk. That would be done hopefully early in the program, whereas a travel agent is typically pretty low risk. pretty low risk. So you have big, big discrepancies in terms of how urgent it is for some of these businesses, and, and I think we, we want to tackle the higher risk, the, the ag society, the industrial users, the problem properties first, and so, um, that way we'll get a jump on really reducing the town's risk as soon as we can.
Okay. And like, I guess, uh, another question would be, like, would we be not looking at rebating, say, institutions like the hospital, make them pay full fare?
That's something that, that can be decided. Uh, we haven't put anything in the bylaw, so we thought that we could come back in terms of enforcement through a, a policy.
Okay.
So, uh, policy is pretty easy to change and, and amend as we see fit. We hadn't really thought about whether we exclude institutional properties from a rebate program, but, uh, that's entirely up to council as to what you'd like to see.
Sure. Okay. Thank you very much, Michael.
And I have one last question for you, Michael. Does the, if the program's approved, does it have to be fully completed in order to demonstrate our due diligence, or does it have to be started to show that we've done some due diligence?
That's, that's an interesting question.
In case there's a catastrophic thing.
I think doing your due diligence, uh, if, let's say we had an instance and suddenly the province, under the Water Act, said, well, Strathmore, you're guilty of providing contaminated water to a customer, uh, it would then be up to Strathmore to say, well, yes, this did happen, but here's what we're doing now. If you're saying, well, we're doing 10 properties a year, and in the next 30 years, we'll get it done, they'll probably say that's not due diligence. Uh, but the fact that you're embarking on a program and sticking with it and embracing that program would, would probably be seen as due diligence.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
And this brings us to item 6.3, Recreation and Culture Quarterly Report. Mark Pretzloff, welcome back.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, your worship, whatever. You know who you are, right?
No comment there, Counselor Peterson?
No. Um, so, uh, your worship and council, uh, obviously I'm here to speak about, uh, provide a quarterly update on, uh, what's going on in recreation and culture. So, uh, coincidentally, or, uh, we're starting with the Aquatic Center after that, uh, conversation of backflows. Um, we have a couple of things going on. Obviously, uh, October's a busy month, uh, school's coming back into session. Um, one of the biggest focuses that we're, uh, we're trying to change within our pro, programming is focused on, uh, our Friday nights. Historically, this has been a, uh, a facility booking with our water polo group, um, but we're looking to transition to make it more, uh, family-friendly and focused on the public. So our tuna swims are, are moving, uh, to every Tuesday, uh, Friday, uh, sorry, every first and third Friday. Um, obviously it speaks to the things there, and then our last, uh, Friday of every month is, uh, gonna be a family night. Um, uh, the next big thing, obviously at the end of October, is our pumpkin swim. Um, so on Sunday, the 27th, as a part of public swim, uh, we'll be, uh, giving away some pumpkins and coordinating our, uh, carving with the youth hub, I think it's called now, uh, the youth hub, in terms of to provide some carving and, uh, some games and activities all at the civic center. Uh, the one thing of note, well, not lots of things of note, but it should be noted we had a very busy summer. Um, our swim, our summer swimming lessons, uh, increased by 8%, so approximately 650 registrations from 2018 to 2019. So, um, I, obviously summer is a busy time and people want to cool down, but they're still learning about water safety and things like that. Um, speaking about the civic center, um, we, at the start of the Sep, start of September, we had our, another successful revs night. Uh, some of the comments that we received are, um, we just do, as usual, do a, a post-event, uh, report, and, uh, the feedback from the, those in attendance were just, it was a great experience. They really valued having everything in one location. Um, really excited that if you're new to Strathmore, this is kind of the one-stop-shop. Um, so obviously tho, those are very satisfying, uh, news to receive after an event like that. Um, that, one thing that I didn't add to this report, cause it actually happened in August, it's a long time ago, we added new sliding doors, uh, to the, uh.
Wonderful.
Yeah, I was, didn't realize it till I was putting this together, I'm like, oh yeah, that's a, a, a good thing that we want to add there. So we're very excited about that, and a lot of the users now of the pool kind of walk right into the pool thinking those doors were gonna slide open too, so.
First.
Some, yeah, something we have to inform our, our patrons about, so. Um, over in the family center, um, I think the biggest news there that, uh, I think I'm very excited about is we have a new facility manager, uh, Craig Diltz. Unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, so he'll be here next week. Um, he's, he's quickly immersed himself into the daily operations of the facility. Um, he's looking at both short and long-term planning and is, uh, is very keen, well, I don't know, I'm sure she's keen to do it, but he has a history of, uh, overseeing, uh, safety programs at his previous employer, so we're very excited to have him a part of our, uh, overseeing the facility as part of our Recreation and Culture Safety Committee. Um, it's regular business over there now, um, obviously, well, not obviously, but the inslice, installation went on without a hitch this year, so we're very excited about that, only having to put in the ice once, um, well, on both sides. And the one thing of note that, uh, Craig and his team are now bringing in is they're doing a pumpkin curling event on October 31st. So, um, I can only imagine the mess that's happens, but, um, yes, I think it just kind of goes without saying, so, uh, that just kind of came across my desk today, but, um, it's something we'll be working with, uh, communications and, and our other, um, elements to, uh, broadcast that to our, our users and our community. Uh, within the sports center, um, you know, our, our slow September, our slow August is now picking up. Um, we're seeing our, our facility user groups, the soccers, the volleyballs, all starting their operations and, and their program, their fall and winter programming now, and you can see on the slide there that, um, our, two of our biggest users are Strathmore Soccer and Chestermere Soccer that are going to be utilizing the field, um, on average about five times a week. Um, our next biggest user is the Chaos Volleyball Club, um, that's gonna be utilizing the, the Magnum Cementing Gymnasium three times a week. Um, we're, we've started offering some programs within the facility, uh, kickboxing classes, uh, senior exercise, senior size, which is our most popular of the, of those, and a mummy and me fitness class. Um, one, one other thing that we've started for, or that we're partnering with, hopefully, is, um, Chestermere Soccer and Strathmore Soccer are planning to put on a soccer showcase in about a week, uh, October 19th, I believe. Um, this plan is in the works where there's gonna be a fundraiser, a fun tournament with no coaches and no parents, so, uh, the teams will kind of be made up by themselves, kind of like, uh, hockey draft type of thing, where the kids pick their own teams, they try to keep it even, and they keep the parents and coaches on to the side. Uh, Chestermere is using it as, as a way to, uh, showcase the facility to their users and their parents. Um, Strathmore Soccer will be using it as a way to kickstart their winter season, which will be a, the first time that they can do it here within Strathmore. And then we move to events and culture. Um, obviously we had candidate in the, in the, last time I was here, uh, Terry Fox, we were very happy with, uh, the weather, that the weather cooperated. Um, we had close to 100 participants and we were able to partner with more country to provide barbecue for the participants and the sponsors, raising over about, uh, $4,075, thanks to Counsel Peterson's donation at the end. Um, we had Alberta Culture Days, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and our upcoming events, obviously, is the Downtown Christmas Festival, um, that, all that stuff will be happening in the last week of November, and then we transition right into Rogers Hometown Hockey on December 21st and 22nd. So, uh, we anticipate a very busy, uh, very busy fall slash winter, and we're just hoping that the weather can cooperate and keep it, uh, as, as cheery as it is right there. Um, so I, with that, your worship, if there's any questions from council?
Thank you for your presentation, Counselor Cox.
Thank you, your worship. I heard you say that you're moving, I'm, I'm back at the Aquatic Center, that you were moving to more family-oriented, so I'm gonna bring up that question, cause I get asked all the time at my seniors advisory, are you going to change the temperature of the pool?
I think, uh, I'll speak with our facility manager on that. It's a challenge in terms of raising the temperature or decreasing it. Um, there's a lot of stakeholders within, uh, the swimming community, um, all requiring, um, special needs and, um, special temperatures. Um, so I think we'll have to evaluate it on a, by user-by-user basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cox. Counselor Sobel?
Thank you, and I'm still at the Aquatic Center, if I could, uh, and thank you for your presentation, Mark. Um, it's nice to see the increase of 8% in the, in the registrations, that's, uh, that's great news. Uh, quite some time ago, there was a issue, uh, sent to administration regarding the possibility of allowing Strathmore and Wheatland County residents some time to, uh, register prior to it opening to the rest of the world. Is, is that in effect?
Uh, it's not in effect right now through the chair. Um, our new software does enable us, uh, to, um, have, send priority bookings to our, uh, returning users or, um, based on postal codes, um, but we haven't used that feature yet. It's something that, you know, our new software, we're only s- six months in, um, that'd be something we'd have to explore, that possibility on how to allow, I think, early bird registrations, um, to, uh, the user groups out there.
Um, if I may just add to that, um, that would be a policy decision that we would have to implement with council support, and so if you wish to see, um, how we could implement that, we can bring forward a really simple policy to, um, to regulate that i- in the facility.
I would be totally in favor of that, not all the rest of council, but to discuss it anyway.
I think that's a good point, and as, as we move farther and this, the sports center gets used more, that we may face that as far as, uh, our usage versus Chestermere usage, you know, as we grow and as our numbers take off.
So if I can make a recommendation, um, the recreation department is currently working on a facility allocation policy that something like this would fit nicely in. Um, it's planning to be in front of council before the end of the year, and so we will make sure that that's included, and you'll be able to see it.
Thank you, and my last question was in regards, and I know this is, I think is being worked on as we speak, but, uh, I, I guess I'm looking for an update as to where we sit with the, uh, issue pertaining to signage in the, in the, uh, family center, uh, pertaining to the location of change rooms. Which does not appear on the screen.
Oh.
And is on a white, on a whiteboard now.
Sorry.
Talk about.
Sorry, uh.
Yeah.
Counselor, yeah. Um, so the challenge that we're facing there, our old system, um, that displayed the information where the u, where the user groups would be changing or their ice allocation is incompatible with our new software.
Right.
Um, so that's something that we're working with, um, the provider, Perfect Mind, as well as other facilities, uh, within, within Alberta, that, uh, Medicine Hat or Airdrie, trying to figure out a solution. Um, most of the facilities that, uh, like Airdrie or Medicine Hat that utilize, uh, Perfect Mind, um, are going towards a whiteboard sys, situation right now. Um, there is a fix, we've been told through Perfect Mind, but, um, that hasn't been tested right yet, so.
It's understandable, uh, I, I, I just, when I, when I was there, I just saw a lot of confusion from parents, uh, there's two whiteboards and, and they're just like turning around, keep going around, they don't know, so if we're gonna use the whiteboard system, I, I would really appreciate and reg, and, and suggest that we, we have sufficient detail on those whiteboards to, to properly direct, uh, parents to the boards, because right now, uh, they're using the, the old peek and see to see which room they're supposed to be in, or it was, uh, when I was there last, anyway. Thank you very much, Mark.
Yes, Counselor Sobel, we'll definitely look into that, and, you know, it is, it is something for us to take a step backwards in terms of, of this, but it's, um, the, the joys and wonders of technology and, and you'd think everything would be compatible, but, um, it's a little bit of a struggle that we're kind of, uh, we're kind of getting, uh, just, hitting some speed bumps right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. Counselor Peterson?
I just wanted to say that, uh, in, in all of this, that, that you've put before us, one of the things that, that I'm really mindful of is the very, very good staff that we have and, and how great they are, uh, in, in public service and, uh, spending time in the swimming pool, um, a couple occasions this summer, there were so many kids in the pool that people had to wait. Watching how your staff managed that, how they encouraged people to stay and, you know, just sort of kept their eye on everything, being, uh, seeing some very, very busy weekends over at the sports center, uh, and, and watching staff, uh, very few staff, um, manage a, a very large group of people with, um, with a lot of integrity and, and it's, it's very much appreciated because we recognize that we've put a lot on your plate, and I, I'm very grateful for what I see in the community, and very proud of the way the staff, uh, present themselves.
Yes, we're very fortunate that we have the leaders we have at all those facilities, and they really model the, uh, behavior that we're, uh, looking for.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson, and if I could build on that, we had a tour recently. Uh, Calgary Metropolitan Regional Board has, uh, has hired a firm that's doing, uh, helping to come up with the plan for our region, and we were able to tour them around, and they were very impressed with the amount and the quality of recreation facilities that this town has, so that's a big feather in our cap. Uh, so that was my comment. My question is, I've gotten a couple of people asking me questions about the blue arena in terms of flickering lights, and it, it doesn't look as nice as the gold arena, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Uh, yes, your worship, we're, it's one of those, uh, we're waiting for parts, unfortunately, and we've, can't explain why, we had some issues on the blue side versus the gold side. Uh, we believe it was contributed to, we had some, when we were installing the ice, there was some high humidity that was raised in that, in that part of the building, um, whether it's because of aging infrastructure or, um, or the lights themselves, um, unfortunately we're, I don't want to say we're in the waiting game trying to get parts, but, um, that's exactly where we're at.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation tonight. And that brings us to item seven, urgent business. I don't believe we have urgent business, so we're looking for a motion to come out of committee of the whole?
I just have.
Oh, Counselor Peterson?
I just have two questions, your worship, just, the, the first one is regarding, uh, growing families, has asked me again if, if, uh, the question to our CIO regarding the, um, waiver of costs for their use for their jelly bean dance. This arose out of a situation where they applied for a CIF grant back in the summer, not knowing that there were no more funds in that pool, and, and part of that ask was to have the fees waived for their October 18th jelly bean dance, and so when they were turned down for the CIF grant, they assumed that was the same.
Thank you, your. Excuse me. Sorry, I have your problem, your worship. Through the chair, um, we are happy to look into that for them, we're just waiting for staff to report back, and I, and I don't think it's got to our director yet, so it's, because it's gone through, um, I talked to it with my assistant Erica, and I, I don't see any barriers there, I don't think, so we will, we are more than happy to try and accommodate them.
Through the chair, your worship, I would encourage them to call me directly, and we can sort that out very quickly.
So, so this has been on the books for a while, so there's some great urgency, cause it's October 18th. Yeah.
We definitely have capacity to, to support that.
So you have Margot Sevick's email, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if you could just contact her, cause I, I think she just thought that because the CIF grant was rejected, that that was also a part of that, so it would ease their minds greatly if they knew that, that that factor was mitigated, especially in light of the fact that we fund them, uh, we're one of their funders, so, thank you for that. And the second one is, uh, your worship, just your patience in asking our legislative services to put, um, the issue of, uh, opening our, uh, first meeting of the month in prayer, the ministerial association has requested that we bring that before council, and, and, uh, your worship has said that with your forbearance, we may do that October 16th, only if you say.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson, and Jen, you have that? Thank you. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to come out of committee of the whole? Counselor Peterson?
I would move that we come out of committee of the whole, your worship.
You've all heard the motion, all in favor, and a motion to go in camera.
I would move that we go in camera.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. You have a motion to go in camera, all in favor, and we are now in camera at 8:25.